All right.
Great. Let's go.
So, good evening, everyone. This is our annual public hearing for our school district budget, which the board has gone through extensive process with the administration and community to arrive at a budget that was adopted at the last Board of Education meeting on the eighteenth of April. The proposed budget is in the amount of fifty-nine million one hundred thousand four hundred ninety-four dollars. It meets the calculated tax levy cap. We have a budget-to-budget increase of one point three two percent with a tax rate of eighteen dollars ninety-two cents per thousand of assessed value. Unfortunately, the district is unable to provide tax comparisons for folks in the community. Residents are going to have to do that on their own because of the reassessment. There is a tax calculator on our website, so community members are encouraged to visit that, calculate your taxes for the seventeen-eighteen budget, and make a comparison to your tax bill for sixteen-seventeen school year. Bless you. In sum, it is a budget that not only maintains and supports all district programs, it continues with significant investment in the maintenance of our facilities, including grounds and buildings, and also has additional initiatives associated with the budget to enhance or support our instructional program. These items include an additional point-six FTE for instrumental music staff at the secondary schools, a point-four high school social studies teacher, and a point-six high school mathematics teacher to help reduce class sizes. It supports the growth of Project Lead the Way into fifth grade. It also, I'll say adds, but in many ways restores, a K-five literacy coach to support ELA instruction in our elementary schools. There is also an addition of a middle school, high school library and media specialist, and many other initiatives, including additional funding for student clubs, increase of our security staff by one member to have a roving guard here at the campus to ensure we're providing the safest environment possible for our students. The election day is May sixteenth. There is still opportunity for folks that are not registered to either register to vote for this particular election, or to register to vote by absentee ballot. There's plenty of information on the subject posted on the district website, and certainly anyone can reach out to our district clerk, Ms. Cardia, who can be of assistance. This budget, this vote on the sixteenth, has one trustee for election, and uncontested, which is Mr. Whitney's seat. We have Maria Kashkin, who is running uncontested for that role. Aside from that, there's a vote yes, yea, or nay on the budget, and a separate proposition to increase our board from five trustees to seven trustees. If the proposition is approved, there will be a subsequent election for two additional trustees that would be sworn in for the seventeen-eighteen school year to begin two- three-year terms. We're still working on specifics related to the date of that second election. Unfortunately, the laws on the subject aren't completely explicit with some conflicting details, so we're waiting for legal counsel to weigh in, and once those facts are known, you can trust that Ms. Cardia and the district will communicate that as widely as possible. But, long and short, a lot of budget information on the website. Any questions, please check it out, or email us at budget@irvingtonschools.org. We certainly will entertain any questions from the public.
All right. Hearing none.
So, with that being said, you can just close the public hearing.
All right. So, may I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Don't move.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Now, we can...
We have five minutes to wait for other folks to arrive.
All right. Oh, yes, we do.
We're all about efficiency today. We saw a typo in this.
This general has...
Isn't that great?
This, so...
Yeah. Found a typo on my own, right? And I have a Q with a D post over here. And, um, and read it, proofed it, and now I'm reading, you know, referencing it. I find a typo.
Sometimes you look at things so much. They say when you're proofing, you read that you should read backwards, and then you're likely...
Yeah, it changes your thinking, right?
You see that we reduced level? We mean, reduced level to increased level. We reduced level. The supposition is...
For one thing, maybe, the two of you want to mention, when we come to maybe committee and liaison reports, just that, you know, to note that the board had a retreat last Monday in developing a, you know, Board of Education, Deb and Phil are working on a...
Yep.
...ad hoc committee, and will report back to the full board before the end of Mr. Whitney's term.
Yep. We'll do that.
I mean, it's crazy, because we're really not giving them anything.
Yeah, where are they?
Well, no, because they can't, if they're not willing to pay.
So...
It makes her contribution. It sounds like almost a fifty.
Yeah. I don't know.
Is that what you're doing for spring?
Sticks. Sorry?
She did, she did a screen sport?
Right. Try.
Try. That's right.
She found out this year...
But she's on, I guess, maybe she's on a different team than Kate this, at this point. I was like, I didn't see her.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Right, exactly. She found out this year, a, she does well at the four-hundred.
Wow, great.
So, she ran it the very first time, and did very well, and then improved her time like the third time she ran it by eight seconds.
Fantastic. So, you have to spend a few times just sort of getting that pacing down, yeah?
Yeah, yeah. So, she's, that was a big surprise, but she's, I've been to every track, now she's doing the relays and stuff.
Yeah. Yeah, the relays are at the end, right?
Yeah, so, so yesterday I left at six-thirty, you know, six-forty-five. That's exactly what I said. Saturday, I went to the president's. Proton. Got there way too early. Got there eleven.
I mean, that cash flow money is what he uses a lot of days.
Yeah. Well, no, I mean, my, my thing was, if he wants to be president or do anything...
I guess I could just see, I mean, well, is it just farce here, or there's the Raspak, which you'd run that, or is that just...
I think that's just farce. I don't think she, you were retroactive again, and they start.
The longest break she's got.
But she's enjoying herself, and, you know, they, and, um... Yeah, I mean, you know, that's never...
Yeah.
They all enjoy her. I'm going tomorrow, and I'm going to...
Probably never been to this room.
But you have to wait, like most people.
What's going on, big man? Hey, feel about it. You hear a guy?
I'm going tomorrow, actually.
You brought dad this time? You brought dad this time? Good.
I think it even says that until they do all the...
You gotta think about that.
I love the word...
I know, isn't that great? Look at his shirt. "I'm in DI, what's your superpower?" That's an awesome shirt.
They don't care, no.
All right, what's that, these things, why does everybody wash their hands before they have to shake? I'm gonna have to, like, boost my...
Welcome, all of you. We look forward to seeing you. Had, had, we've heard great things about you, so we definitely looking forward to recognizing you tonight. So, I'm going to reconvene the public meeting, and we're going to start with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. May I have a motion to accept tonight's agenda?
Don't move.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. And with that, we get to recognize the faces that are new to us this evening. Good to see all of you. So, Joyce, I guess, take it away.
Yeah.
Great.
So, I have to say, before we even begin, you know, we have the students, we have the pleasure of honoring so many students in, in this room before Board of Education meetings, and oftentimes, we think it's the high schoolers, as they're earning all kinds of accomplishments, and then we get into some, you know, GOB, and Spelling Bee, and things like that, all amazing accomplishments, but none of them had the word "global" in front of their achievement. So, to think global competition is pretty darn amazing. So, for me, congratulations, we're so proud of you. And I can't wait to hear more about how you got to where you are, and where you're headed in a few weeks.
So, good evening, everyone. Dr. Harrison, Dr. Core, Ms. Stein, members of the Board of Education, thank you for having the members of Destination Imagination join you at the board meeting to be acknowledged for their accomplishments. Before I get to them, I just want to tell you a little bit about Destination Imagination, for those of you who don't know, and maybe want some more information. So, the mission of DI is to develop opportunities that inspire the global community of learners to utilize diverse approaches in applying twenty-first century skills and creativity. So, what that really means is, the Destination Imagination program is a fun, hands-on system of learning that fosters students' creativity, courage, and curiosity through open-ended academic challenges in the field of STEM, science, technology, engineering, and math, fine arts, and service learning. Our students here today learned patience, flexibility, persistence, ethics, respect for others and their ideas, and the collaborative problem-solving process. All of the students here tonight, they had the opportunity to showcase their solutions at a tournament on March eighteenth, which was the affiliate tournament. Sixty-seven of our Irvington students participated, ten teams, and of those ten teams, the two teams that are here tonight surfaced to move on to the state tournament that was held on April eighth in Binghamton. And they were acknowledged there also to move on to what we call global finals, which will take place at the end of May in Knoxville, Tennessee. And so, they really demonstrated themselves to be such team players. They worked really well together from the beginning of the school year until now, under the leadership of their team managers. None of this would happen without the support of our amazing team managers, both the ones who are here and the ones who supported and led the teams that did not move on to this level of competition. We also have to thank the Irvington Education Foundation, because they support the DI coordinator position, and in addition, we just wrote an off-cycle grant to support the students and the team members who are going to global finals, and the Irvington Education Foundation also supported that grant, so that we could subsidize the cost for the students to attend global finals. And so, also, I want to acknowledge Nancy Weckner, who the IAF is supporting her position, because she's a Destination Imagination coordinator this year. So, DI has been in place in Irvington for three years. This is our third year, and we're so proud of the students here tonight, because they really demonstrated themselves to understand what DI is all about. They represented us, like, in such an amazing way, themselves as individuals, their families, but, you know, most importantly, you know, what we believe in at Main Street School and in Irvington School. So, I acknowledge you all whole as a collective. But I'd like to acknowledge them as individuals as well. So, if you could, should I say their names and they'll stand, or do you want them to come up?
Sure.
And we can do, can I do each team, and then they'll come up? Is that okay?
That's great.
Okay. So, let's do our fourth grade team that's moving on to global finals at the end of May.
Which one is that?
Oh, Gerald Harrison is a random person.
Okay. No, it's a random name.
Well, right, so, it's okay, it's okay. They went by two different names.
Okay. Well, we only put name in.
Right, we have it in two different ways. It's okay. So, I'm going to say everybody's name, and so, the leadership of the team, so Nancy Silverman and Jen Williams, I mean, they have been, where are they? Have been outstanding, yes.
Unfortunately, with knee surgery, I had to leave halfway, and there's this really nasty...
And so, the members of this team are Alex Williams, Ethan Walters, Ian Eckers, Jack Silverman, Menori Furtado, Reina Gupta, Sawyer Charleston. So, if you would stand up and come on up, the board would like to shake your hand and congratulate you. So, line up right here, Doc.
All right, so, you're Alex, right?
No, I'm Jack.
Okay, you came out of order. There you go, Jack. Congratulations. Good job.
Well done.
All right, and you are, you're, I'm sorry?
Sawyer.
Sawyer. There you go. Congratulations.
Well done.
Alex, all right, I had your name first. Congratulations. Good job. And you're Menori? Congratulations. Ethan?
Ian.
Ian. Oh, Ian, Ian. Yes, I guess so. I guess you're Reina. Where is Ian?
It's good when you have a lot.
Oh, we're missing one for each. Oh, Ian. There you go. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Congratulations.
And to our fifth grade team, many of them participated previously in DI, and some of them together on a previous team. So, the Wise Dolphins, under the leadership of Trista Neubauer, so Trista, if you could, uh, the leadership of Hatankin, and Kit Kempler, and the members of the team, the Wise Dolphins, Carly Taylor, Chloe Pisani, Emma G., Jack Kempler, Caitlin G., Maren Parisol, Will Neubauer, stand up. And then come on.
We have your little names sorted. Congratulations.
Jack, if you could model our T-shirt, that would be great. Thank you.
Jack, you Jack?
Congratulations.
This is Jack. And you are Chloe? Congratulations.
Thank you.
And you, Caitlin? Here we go. Congratulations. You are Emma? Congratulations to you, Emma. Good job. Maren?
Good job, Emma.
Congratulations.
Wonderful job, young lady. Congratulations.
I just mean, we're doing these in a full order next time.
So, we're really excited, we're really excited, and we will give you an update at the end of May after we attend global finals. So, we wish everybody the best of luck. It's the first time that we're going to global finals, so we'll see how it goes.
Congratulations.
I just wanted to say, we look forward to having you back again after global finals for the next round.
Dr. Harrison, members of the board and administration, I just want you to know, I, so I happened to participate and compete against both. To see it firsthand, rather than hear about it, was fun. What they, what they both created was beyond what you could even begin to see or understand, that these kids came together with very little parental guidance, which is one of the facets of it, and the things they put together were really mind-blowing. So, congratulations. It was a great job. Beautiful experience.
Great. Good luck.
So, you're welcome to stay, but you also are free to go if you prefer.
Please stay. No, it's okay. It's the choice.
Oh, we should...
Oh, yeah. That was good.
Yeah, I mean...
There was like a computer panel. Yeah, in the middle of classroom. Those little girls are the best artists.
Honestly, mine.
And she's... We came in third, behind, in the fifth grade.
You must have been torn with who you were rooting for.
No, not at all. Not for one second. Cutthroat. We, we, we sent spies out. We had everything happening. But it was really like, and then Ms. Weckner, she did such an unbelievable job of coordinating anything we needed, we wanted, the rooms, the materials, like, really, it was a first-class experience. It really was. We should find a way to make it, make it bigger, because they had to struggle to find money to go to Tennessee.
They just said IAF was helping.
Yeah.
Any more?
Okay, I want to move to the next exciting part of our agenda, to recognize two amazing leaders, and to, to grant them tenure tonight. So, I think Chris has a few words to say, but this is a, just another great part of our agenda this evening.
Yeah, so, we started off with great student-centered news, and I think we moved even more wonderful student news, because the board is about to grant tenure to, to amazing people and wonderful leaders. And Joyce Chapnick is our principal of Main Street School, and Allison Daly is our assistant principal of the middle school. So, congratulations. There's such talent and passion in both of you, and the work that you bring with you every single day. You're tremendous colleagues, whether it's teachers, administrators, our custodians, aides, clerical. You're great partners to everyone, and because of you, our schools are a better place. So, we thank you for everything that you've done during your probationary period, but we know that you're going to continue to achieve great things, and continue to lead our schools so wonderfully on behalf of our students. So, congratulations, and thank you.
Thank you.
Yes. Did it come up and shake everybody's hand?
We expect long speeches from both of you. I hope you are prepared. So, may I have a motion to vote on granting tenure to Allison and Joyce?
Don't move.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Congratulations.
Okay.
The next wave of people. Or you can stay.
You're all welcome to stay.
Now, we can open the door.
Lindsay and Lauren, you can go. It's okay. See, Lindsay and Lauren, they don't know what to do. Wait a minute. Bye. Good night.
Lindsay and Lauren.
Who they? Fifth grade, two new fifth grade teachers at Main Street.
They'll be packing them in tonight, huh?
Yeah.
I think the lowest attendance of the year.
Okay, Chris, take it away. The district update, please.
Yeah, so, just a few updates from your team this evening. First, I want to extend congratulations to our students and staff for a wonderful performance Thursday night, the high school band concert. And as always, the art show was spectacular. We appreciate the talents that the students shared with us on that evening, and, you know, as we head through the year, we love these milestones and the concerts, because it just brings to life a different component and a different set of talents in our school district. So, thank you, and congratulations to all the band students and our art students for the art show. I do want to make note of some complications that are brewing across the state of New York with respect to the district calendars for next year. SED continues to pose challenges for school districts, and rather than making our lives easier and supporting our work, they choose to have us spend our time on little nuanced things like district calendar. Recently, SED issued a series of three different memos that they state were intended to clarify the rules and regulations in and around school calendar. But in fact, they are now being challenged by unions and professional organizations across the state, that they're actually expanding the rules and regulations, and, and looking at where we see potential concerns in Irvington, really points to our elementary schools. And one is a little cut, more cut and dry than the other, but what they've done is they're clarifying some expectations on the number of hours that are expect, we're expected to have in a school week. So, at the elementary level, we're supposed to have twenty-seven and a half hours in a school week, and at the secondary level, twenty-five hours. There's a caveat to that rule, where if we have a week with a holiday, those hours are modified to twenty-two and a half and twenty hours, respectively. So, in their one memo, they drew attention to a common practice across schools nationally, just not New York, Westchester or Irvington, where the last few days of school are often early release days. And in the one memo, it said that if we do not attain those minimal hours, that you can, don't get to count those days towards instruction. But at the secondary level, there's no problem with, with having the shortened days, because we look at that as exam times, and kids can come and go as they have their exams. So, that's one area where there's critique that they're expanding their reach. The other is, is really strange, if you ask me. It speaks specifically to kindergarten programs, and kindergarten programs where you kind of ease into the full-day program, like we do in Irvington. We have about a week and a half where our students come on a modified schedule as they're oriented into the school. It's also opportunity for our teachers to have conferences with the parents, to prepare them for the school year, collect more information to be able to support the children well in their transition, but they're applying that same standard, and saying that the day should not count, when I, I can't envision how we single out one particular grade level when the rest of the school is engaged in full days of school. Further complicating this, and it seems very contrary, if you ask me, is that kindergarten is not a mandated program. So, I'm not sure, bless you, how they can single this out in the memo, when there's other laws that indicate that kindergarten does not have to be in full force in schools across the state of New York. So, I can tell you that the State Teachers Union, NICEIT, has taken a strong position on this, saying that this is far-reaching, bless you, and that other professional organizations have done the same. I can tell you, one of my professional organizations actually has a meeting with the commissioner where this has been placed on the agenda. So, we're hoping that there's going to be some resolution, and that SED is going to provide some clarity for us, or back down from these mandates. If they really stand their ground on this one, you can imagine in the coming months that there's going to be a proposal to modify the school calendar. The consequences for not doing this, and because of how state ed has pushed this out, we believe that there's going to be some universal calendar audits, and if they calculate hours to be less than the state standards, that, that there's concern that the state would go after state aid and proportionately reduce foundation aid to school districts. Just speculation at this point, but the, the language that's come down has been pretty clear and pretty strong. So, I will keep the board and the community apprised of any developments on that front, and hopefully, we don't find ourselves in a position where we're modifying calendars, because very clearly, it'd be one thing if we're modifying vacation times when folks may have already made plans, but now we're impacting student experiences when we think about how we induct our elementary students, or introduce them to our school experience, and, and then we think of the, the traditions that we have in closing out the school year, let alone the time the teachers need to wrap out, wrap up the school year, and student grading, and packing up rooms and the like. So, this would be very, very complicated, so let's hope this is a time where lobbying efforts pay off on behalf of our students, and if there's going to be some change, you know, allow us time to develop plans for that, and not kind of be shooting in the dark as we're looking to adjust our calendar. The finals, yes?
Just one quick comment. I mean, it seems like what we've been seeing over past years, where a well-intentioned mandate, they may solve an issue in one set of schools, is applied across the state, and it's a solution that we don't need. It's actually creating a problem. So, it's, it's just consistent with what we've been seeing in past years.
I, I think it's fair to say that, Michael, and this is, I think, another one of those scenarios, where somebody got in the right person's ear, and now we're, we're seeing this push. And as, as we've become accustomed to, there's little thoughtful planning with the field, as they refer to us. So, they don't fully understand the implications of making changes like this and doing it at this point in a school year, when calendars have already been adopted across the entire state. Is there, I mean, certainly in other situations, maybe...
Is there, I mean, certainly in other situations, maybe it's not needed yet, but certainly we've seen schools and communities reach out directly to their regents to give feedback. Is that?
Yeah, I think, let's see how it unfolds and with these different meetings that are occurring over the next week or two, and if we find ourselves in a position where there's no movement from state leadership, I think some advocacy is really needed. But we certainly will let you know. And then the final thing that I wanted to speak to at this point is just a quick update on East Field. Construction is in full swing. We have equipment up, working on the fields. They did the final grading of the fields. There's new drainage lines going in, connection of pipes and the like. You know, we're looking at a window now, you know, considering weather, we could potentially be pushed into July, but if we have a good streak with weather and our contractors don't run into any issues, there's the possibility we could even be completed with sod down on the field before we begin summer vacation. So we're quickly moving forward, and we're getting positive feedback. Ms. Stein is to be commended for facilitating weekly construction meetings with representatives from the contractor, our own clerk of the works, and Mr. Knowles, just to keep everybody accountable and understand work plans for each and every week. So we're moving forward, and we're optimistic that we will certainly be done by July at the latest with the field available for use in the fall of 2018. Yeah, so we have to wait for, even though it's sod, you still have to wait two growing seasons for a healthy root system to take. Had we seeded, it would have been another season, and we would have been waiting until the spring of 19. So this is best-case scenario for us right now. So with that said, Dr. Core, you want to provide us an update on some of the curriculum work?
Sure. So we are pushing along. We had another early, or delay, early release last, I don't know, when was that now? Was it Friday?
Friday.
Yes, it was Friday. Friday. So teachers are continuing to develop their units of study. We have also started to do some planning and alignment work for the next-gen science standards. So one of the very nice things that we actually now have in place is Project Lead the Way aligns with some of the next-gen science standards. And on their website, they create a document that you can actually order that aligns, that tells you what science standards are being, will be met through Project Lead the Way, program by program. So we work with a consultant who is very knowledgeable and very involved at the state level around the science standards. So she will start, she'll do one day with us at the elementary level, and we just booked her for a day to do the middle level. The middle level is where we'll actually see quite a bit of change because of the way our program is designed. So you might realize, you might know this. So the way that our program is currently designed, in sixth grade, the program is different units of study that hit on different areas of science. And in eighth grade, that's sort of similar, but in seventh grade, we really do a full year, really, it's like, it's bio, it's really living environment. So that's a problem. You can't really design your curriculum that way based on the new next-gen science standards. It's really meant to be at the middle level, to touch on the different sciences so that kids are experiencing and learning different areas of science throughout the course of the year. We've been this way for as long as I can remember when I was at the middle school. So our very first step is to actually look at our curriculum and start to do some redesigning or redefining of what our units of study should be in grade six, seven, and eight. At the high school, it's not the content that's going to change so much based on the next-gen science standards, it's actually the approach. So there's an expectation of a different kind of teaching, certainly inquiry-based. So the high school will probably start our work in the fall. So, you know, next gen, there are questions about the actual rollout of the new assessments and when those will be put in place. Right now, we're anticipating 2021. So if we roll out a new science curriculum at the middle level, that would be pretty good timing for us because we would have to start to change it each year. So the first year we'd roll out would be a change to sixth, the next year would be a change to seventh, and the last year would be a change to eighth, which would keep us pretty much aligned with the new expectations. So we're excited. We think we have a lot of pieces already in place that we're going to align really nicely. The next-gen science standards also align with the math standards and the ELA standards. So there's an expectation of an interdisciplinary approach to teaching science. So we're excited. I would say that that's going to be big work for us, moving all of, starting this summer and then all of next year for sure, if not the year following as well.
That's great news, and that is a lot of work. And so one of the things I think would rally the conversation behind, as we start to think forward in May and June about the strategic planning and all that, I would really be interested in, I wonder if the rest of the board would, just to sort of see what the professional development plan looks like around that work as the year, how it aligns to the strategic plan and so forth. As time goes by, we really need to see sort of, you know, maybe sometime over the summer, what that PD plan going into next year looks like.
I would just need greater clarification on what you mean. In other words?
Development plan.
Okay.
For gen ed.
For all professional development.
So what our objectives are in the areas where work would be achieved.
Like in particular, what Raina was just talking about, the science, all that work that she was just describing, I would love to see what it looks like across the year. When we talk about, you know, approving extra days and hours and stuff, you know, like things like that, what does that PD look like?
So you referred to, I guess the reason I'm just wanting clarity is because it's not PD right now, it's curriculum development. The PD plan would be coming after. So in other words, based on the science standards, based on our needs, we would be designing what professional development teachers actually need to implement the teaching to meet those standards.
So the teachers are all curriculum developers?
That's who directs the, what do you mean?
Well, just in my experience, teachers aren't curriculum developers, and so professional development plan would work on how they're learning how to build curriculum.
Yeah, no, and I mean, we're just writing the curric, so I just want to be clear that there's a difference between, I know you know this, there's a difference between curriculum development and professional development. Right now, we're in curriculum development, so the example I would give for professional development, for instance, would be our work with the secondary English department with BARD. That would be an example, and I know you've seen some updates on the work that we're doing with that.
Yeah, a lot of professional development, in my experience, is tied very closely together with curriculum development, right? So if I'm developing my own curriculum, then I would presume that you're providing professional development to them in terms of how they can make alignments and find the best resources and all those different kinds of things. So that's why I'm curious to see what that plan.
Right, so just to be clear, so our pattern is a little bit different than New York City where I think you have curriculum developers?
I'm not talking about the city, I'm just talking in general.
Right, so we do our curriculum development first, and then generally speaking, based on the curriculum development, that's how we identify the needs of the teachers, and that's how we then decide on the professional development. I'd be happy to share that.
So Carol, the update on some of the work related to food services?
One more transportation, I think I worked on this week. So speaking of plans, we're finding that our budget is over and we can dedicate some time to other things. We're going to be working on the transportation committee that we, that we would set up, and trying to work through how to do this, and we're going to have, the way I envision this, is having a parent, you know, a parent from each school be on the committee. We'll involve our transportation department and some of our administrators so that we can start to look at the issues, figure out how we analyze the, you know, the needs, the data, and then come up with some solutions. So we will be reaching out to people, starting that, starting like maybe later this week or next week to get this all started. That's really, we're just in the very beginning of planning stages right now, but we are going to address this. Food services.
So how, I'm sorry, the parents, I know, I heard you say their parents from each school, how would they?
It's no representation.
Right, how would they volunteer to participate? Are you going to select?
I think I'm going to reach out to the people who've reached out to us.
Okay.
And allow them to have the input as to who they can maybe want to select and how they want to do that since they've reached out to us.
Okay, good. I just want to.
Though that's more high school-based in terms of the parents who've reached out.
But we'd like to have some from every school, because whatever we do will affect every school, and I think we need, that's part of the thing I think we need to tell them is that we need to have every, all the schools represented, so. And ideally, even geography, if we can get that. So, you know, the north part of town, south part of town, so I'd like to get a mixture of people, so. But I don't want it to be such a big committee that we can't work, because that won't be productive. Food services, we're in the fourth year of our five-year contract. We are looking to make a couple of minor tweaks in the program. We are going to, we tested now this, part of April and May and June, we'll be using only the white meat chicken, and we are going to be pledging that pretty much for all next year. I think financially, we can do that. So we can't alter the contract greatly, but we can do some minor things, and so we're just trying to figure out exactly what those will be, just to, yes, for the final year. We've done some testing, and some of the things that we offered that were part of the survey, the kids just did not eat. I have numbers on that. I know parents think they do, but.
The whole wheat bread, is that what you're saying?
You know, the whole wheat bread. That's not even that, it's just that some of the, you know, more interesting menu items, some did well, some didn't. So we're, you know, we're always testing, and we're going to keep doing that. I know that there's some news now about the standards changing. I don't know what will change, I don't know how New York will change with that, which tends to be a little bit different than the federal government guidelines, but we do have to follow them. I mean, it will be interesting to see it. It just goes to show you, though, that kids don't eat what their parents think they are eating, you know, or should be eating, but it's interesting.
There may need to be some re, attempted to get people back to try those specific things that you're testing, because I know that there's certain number of kids who may have just given up on it, and so if they don't know that there's some things being tried, they may not get a chance.
There's some creative ideas we have. I've been working with our manager from Aramark, we have some creative plans. We're going to be moving some things around location-wise and just trying to, you know, spotlight things. So we do have some ideas. I don't necessarily want to share them all yet because we're just kind of just starting the process, so I don't want to speak out of turn and then not be able to deliver something, so I'll kind of keep you posted.
But it may need to even messaging go outside of, so.
Yeah, we're going to use the website, we're going to market better. I think that's one of the opportunities we have, is to share more information than we have been doing. I see that readily as an opportunity for us.
Great. And so if you look at the one thing, you know, there's going to be some good politics at play because the articles that I've read about the alterations to the national lunch program, a lot of it is where it's coming from our new administration in Washington, DC. The language that I've seen so far is really kind of delegating consent to individual states to make determinations as to whether or not there's, they're going to allow those levels of flexibility. The one example, they said if you can demonstrate a hardship related to, you know, the use of whole-grain breads and the like, and I know when we had to implement that here, we had a lot of pushback from students in the campus because everybody wanted their ciabatta. And it's not available, obviously. So, you know, so if flexibility comes down, I'm also hearing through the field that they're really trying to dissuade school districts from going out to bid for new food service contracts now because of knowing that the specs and program details are going to be changing. They said they should let this unfold a little bit because you're going to, then going through multiple shifts in your expectations and your management of your meal program. So more to come.
When is it, so next year is the last year of the contract, when would RFP typically go out?
Oh, we will go out and bid sometime in the spring, but we start working on it in the winter even. It's a process to put that together. So, yeah, early, earlier rather than later.
As the next item, I just wanted to, from a communication standpoint, as a follow-up to our last Board of Education meeting, wanted, if you didn't see the communications that went out so many different ways, whether it was from my office, on the website, Facebook, from individual schools, but we have launched a district logo development contest, and all the details can be found on the district website, on the Facebook page, and the bottom line is that there's a lot of details out there, but if anyone's interested, there are some deadlines you have to adhere to. All submissions must be received by 5:00 PM on May 19th, and they must be submitted to Ms. Cardia, and anyone interested, please go and read the rules and regs to make sure you get it in on time and you meet some of the details and specs that the board has released. So we're certainly, we're hearing some buzz among students, so we're anticipating we're going to get a bunch of submissions that will be considered.
We have a backup.
We do.
Okay, so that brings us to our committee and liaison reports. I think one of the things we do want to mention before we get into those is the board had a retreat last week. We got together, and one of the outcomes of the retreat is that we're putting together a new member handbook. Thank you to Phil and Deb, who are working diligently on pulling that together in a short timeframe, but certainly in time for the new members that we anticipate joining us in July of next year, or this year, next year. Ms. Cash can, of course, won't need her new member handbook, but we definitely look forward to it and think that that's going to be a great help to new members who are joining the board.
I think community members might be interested in where we take our retreat.
Oh, what do you mean, take our, in this, in this room?
No exotic locations.
Yeah, it's a wild, exotic place, yes.
It's this room with pizza and salad.
And water. Oh, no, we have Coke, right? So with that, I think we also had a B&amp;G meeting this morning to talk about beautification of the campus, so we're looking at adding some things to, to help give an uplift to the campus. We're talking about bushes and some flowers and things, so that's exciting. We also talked, I don't know if you want to, no, not this time? All right, maybe next time.
Still brewing.
Deb, did you want to talk about anything in the B&amp;G meeting this morning?
I hope everybody noticed the tulips and daffodils that have come up, and the campuses are really looking beautiful. Thank you, Catherine and others who've contributed, and Carol. I didn't do that.
I'm going to say, she won't acknowledge it.
I gave permission, that's all.
She, that's the planter.
Yeah, the gardener.
The lady when I did the yam and work, it's really gorgeous. I can one, I'm certainly.
Thank you, thank you.
In all of your skills.
I just, I wish the deer hadn't eaten the ones that are in the.
You don't have to be cautious.
Well, I, next time I'll move them so the deer can't touch them. Anyway, so thank you, though. We have the communications update. Are there any other people, policy? Oh, sorry.
Our policies being presented tonight. Elaine has nicely organized it, and we are going to cross a few off our list, right, Elaine?
Moving right along.
Good, okay.
Quick West Putnam.
West Putnam, please.
So just to, to board members and our superintendent, there's, the Westchester-Putnam School Board Association has an annual dinner at the end of the year, and it's a great opportunity to meet and talk with other school board members from around the region and hear how their year has been. They also have a keynote speaker who this year is Mark Brackett, who's the director of the Yale Center for Emotional Intelligence and a professor at the Child Study Center at Yale University, and he will be speaking on creating an emotion revolution in our schools. So he's a renowned speaker and consultant, and it will be at the, it will be on May 22nd, if you haven't already signed up. It's a great meeting and dinner.
I think I have signed up, so I think you and I are going.
Excellent.
Okay, which brings us to a time for comments from members of the community, if anybody wants to take the microphone. All right, so moving on to the consent agenda. Is there anything that anybody wants to pull out for special discussion on the consent agenda before we make a motion to vote on it? Anyone?
No.
All right, is there anybody we need to recognize in the consent agenda?
Identify any of the policies?
Oh, yeah, we need to talk about the policies. So let's, let's spend a moment talking about the policies. Deb, do you want to talk, walk us through some of the policies, what we're looking at approving here?
Yeah, to be honest with you, I mean, I don't have them in front of me. I just thought maybe you want to identify, pardon? Do I want to set? Of the policies?
The school board governance and operations.
I was going to say, do we want to identify them, read each one? We can.
Did you say that?
The title?
Let's just identify the titles. So we're looking at school board governance and operations, which includes things like school district and Board of Education legal status, authority, number of members, legal qualifications of voters, appointments and designations of the Board of Education, committees of the board, duties of the school attorney, use of parliamentary procedures, orienting new board members, training, et cetera. We also are going to be approving computer resources and data management. Oh, no, that's just going to be on review, right?
No, they're being adopted as well.
Okay, all right. Computer use in instruction, so acceptable use of computers in instruction. Opioid overdose prevention also being reviewed and approved tonight. That's it.
And think just to note, the opioid overdose prevention, it is an initiative that is growing across the nation, where our nurses will partner with the County Department of Health and receive training, and we will actually stock Narcan in our schools to be able to treat student staff. treat students, staff, visitors, anyone that may be having an overdose situation. Our police officers currently travel it with it in their vehicles. And it's scary that, I think, in this day and age, that this is what we're dealing with. But I think we would be quite remiss if the opportunity was before us to save a life and we opted not to approve such a policy. So with the approval, it actually is going to give us the necessary timeframe to be able to partner with the county to have the training and certifications in place in each school and for us to be able to receive the Narcan dosages for administration.
All right. Do we need to mention the appointment of the election inspectors? Do we talk about those?
No, fifteen.
Okay. All right. So may I have a motion on the consent agenda, to approve the consent agenda?
So move.
Miss Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Which brings us all the way up to community comments or questions again.
Move it to us quickly.
And the announcement of the next public meeting, which will be on Tuesday, May 16th. It'll be at Main Street School to certify the results of the budget vote and the board member election. They have a motion to adjourn.
Actually, could I, I just had a quick question. In terms of getting the word out about the, the second resolution that's up for vote, is that out there in public if people want to Google it or find it on our website?
Yes, certainly, we have a number of resources on the website and our budget newsletter will be hitting, I'm trying to think.
Actually, I got mine in the mail today.
Got it today, so very good. I wish I knew it was this week. So every resident in our school district will be receiving a copy of our budget newsletter, which has the specific details. And now that it's out there, it will be posted on the website and Facebook page as well.
Tax calculator up?
The tax calculator is on the website.
Is I tested it today?
I love that thing. It's great. Like experimenting. What if I...
If you had this much house.
What if, what if I had that house?
What would that be?
What if I had that house?
Before we adjourn, I just, I want to rewind the tape to the DI if I could for a second. I, I would love for us, I don't know if we can, how, I would really love for us to engage over the next, whatever time we have, figure out a way to make that an integral part of the actual budget, some, some way or other. I know it's hard, I know we don't have space and we just went through the whole process, but it was really, really incredible and the numbers are growing to support the conversation at the least. So I just wanted to throw that out there because it was just so amazing.
Yeah, so, and you know, and I have to say, so we're relying on other districts to be able to kind of guide our, our thinking and planning around this. You know, as Joyce said before, it's our third year in existence and the program is growing with our students, right? So we have a sixth grade cohort that's, that's involved, not at the same level as Main Street School, but that group's going to be going now to seventh grade. So you look at a program that's growing. So there's certainly a need to be able to make sure we can support it in different ways. Carol, Joyce and I actually talked for about 40 minutes today specifically about this and trying to come up with the best approach to be able to support this. At some point, there's going to, if the program continues to grow as we're seeing it, there's going to have to be some additional district involvement. We certainly can't always rely on IEF, PTSA to support initiatives like this. But we, in doing so, as, as special as we know this is, we have to step back and look holistically what we're doing with other programs to make sure there's some equity. So, you know, look at longstanding programs like Model UN, our music programs that do, that travel and compete. We want to make sure that we're kind of providing equal billing and opportunity. So if we're going to change our approach to the support, we got to make sure we're hitting like programs and opportunities.
That's why, just a conversation.
But yeah, but no, but that's, but we're just starting that and, you know, we're learning from other schools. And, you know, I have to say, the information that Joyce is getting back from other schools through our region, that a lot of them are being supported by, yeah, by parents. School districts here and there do different things. Some schools will pay a registration fee, some schools will, will pay the stipend of the advisors, but there's a lot of it that's on the backs of parents and that we also think that, you know, there's, there's a need for some fundraising opportunities on an ongoing basis to be able to support it because, you know, it's quite costly to think about 13 children and their parents all traveling to Tennessee for a long weekend and it's a holiday weekend. So, so yeah, we're, we're having that conversation internally and it'll...
You know, they were like, oh, who's paying? Like, when kids start asking who's paying for it, it breaks my heart.
Yeah.
Right? Like, but and that's not, it's not in any way disparaging any of the approach because what Nancy and Joyce did was Herculean and it was tremendous. Like really, just wanted to make sure that we all maybe open it up. So thanks.
Well, just generically, that's up to me in front of us with the next, the two months is to start talking about next year.